Everyone.
Good evening.
Welcome. I'd like to call to order the regular governing board meeting of the Jefferson Elementary School District, November 9, 2016. It is 7:02 PM. And could we have members present, please?
Marie Brizuela.
Here.
Clayton Koo.
Here.
Rebecca Douglas.
Here. And I see Mr. Ali coming through the door. I knew we'd hear him.
I told you one more minute, right? He makes the grand entrance.
Good evening, Mr. Ali.
You can say aye. Here.
And I understand that our children who are the winners of the peace poster contest are going to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. If all of you could come forward to do that, and after the pledge, if you can just stay, rather than finding your way back to the seats, if you can just stay front, we'll be doing the presentation in just a minute or two after that. So come on up and lead us in the pledge. Everybody, guys?
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. It's like I said, just stay for just a minute or two, and we will see if board members could take just a moment to review the board meeting guidelines. If I can uncover my desk, you're going to have to find it. Okay, ready? Could I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. And that brings us to our special presentation from the Daly City Host Lions Club, the 2016 Peace Poster Contest winners. Students from Ben Franklin, Fernando Rivera, Holy Angels, Our Lady of Perpetual Help, and Thomas R. Polosita Schools entered the contest and take it away.
Thank you. Thank you very much for indulging our club in allowing us to offer this remarkable contest to the children of Daly City, Colman, and Broadmoor. This is, for me personally, one of my favorite projects to be involved with. The other one is one that we just recently started. We now have a camera where we can take a picture of the children's eyes and within a second know whether they need to see an eye doctor or not.
Oh, wow.
So we are working with, we just finished, we're finishing up with the Procu schools. We're working with your school nurses to try to schedule the special ed, and then we're going to try eventually to do every child in Daly City. That's our goal. So that's just another nice thing that we would like to be able to do for the community. This year, we had 182 posters submitted from six of the seven eligible schools. One school declined participation this year because we didn't quite get things done quickly enough, so we're going to make sure we don't do that next year. So I'd like to start with Ben Franklin Intermediate School. The prizes for this school were sponsored by the San Mateo Credit Union. And our third place certificate of recognition goes to Borgi Veray. Second place goes to Maya Williams. And our first place winner is Princess Gonzalez. First place winners this year get a $50 Target gift card.
So we'll take the three together here. Photo op. Right way.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. And our next school is Holy Angels School, and the awards are sponsored by the Peranio family. And our third place winner is Wilka Mendiola. Second place is Annabelle Regolato. She's not here as of yet. And first place is Brenda Gonzalez.
Thank you. Thank you. Good job.
Congratulations. From Our Lady of Perpetual Help, sponsored by Doug and Sarah Mortuary, our third place winner is Neil Matthew Mageling. Second place is Kenneth Beltran. I don't believe he's American. And first place is Anderson, excuse me, Anderson Ochoa.
Thank you, ma'am.
She's good at that. Oh, I like that. That's nice.
Thank you. From Thomas R. Polosita Middle School, this is sponsored by Bradley Rojas. Third place is Noah Castro. Did Noah come in? Second place is Jezzy De La Cruz. Giselle, okay, I'm sorry. And first place is Raylin Segum De La Cruz.
Turn around. Is that spelled right?
Last but certainly not least, only because they're alphabetical, from Fernando Rivera's Intermediate School, sponsored by Republic Services. Our third place winner is Emmy Lou Seftel. Second place is Natalie Lim. And first is Jasmine Ma. Thank you very much again for allowing us to do it. We look forward to 2017.
Thank you very much for doing this, and don't go away, because we have some certificates for you as well. But, in fact, why don't we start with those, and then we can make any comments. So you've got, each child has two, one for the flag symbol, one for this. Yeah. They're up there.
Princess Gonzalez.
Thank you.
And I believe this is Maya. Maya. And Borgi.
Me first, me first. I have a certificate for Jasmine Ma.
She has the whole crowd.
Natalie Lim. Is it Seftel? I have a certificate for Raylin Segum De La Cruz. I have for Noah Castro. I should have given you something else. One more school, and we have board members to see. So I, Anderson Ochoa. Neil Matthew Mageling. Emmy Lou Regalado. And Wilka Mendiola. So, I know that Mr. Ali would like to say something.
I was having such a great time just looking at the beautiful pictures. Do you all agree with me? These are amazing.
Yeah.
Let's give them another. Thank you for your great work and participation in creating these beautiful pieces of art. In order to do well in your academics, you also have to feel safe and welcome at your school. So this is one way we can be proactive and not wait for something to happen, for instance, to respond to a bullying incident or something. This is something we can do even if nothing is going on, just to show how we all need to work together and learn how to collaborate, get along with each other, so we can accomplish more. So thank you for your great work, and also thanks to the Lions Club for doing this with us.
I'd like to thank Denise Kelly, who came tonight to present the awards to students, and thank the whole Lions Club for doing this. I forget how many years, but I know it's been a long time. And I hope there's some way that we can preserve some of these pictures, if we have them, since we have them copied up here somehow, because I think it would be really nice to have it displayed when we do our art festival with the schools and actually highlight where it came from and how it came about, so that people will be able to acknowledge that the Lions Club is doing things for our students in many different degrees, so I want to thank that. And my husband was a former member a long, long time ago, not your club, another club, and I know that they do really work with children and the I stuff. So students, your artwork is fantastic, absolutely fantastic. Please keep it up in all the things you do, and one day, one of you will be up there amongst all the greatest artists in the world, because you really have talent. It's beautiful. So congratulations.
Yes.
I want to congratulate all the students and everyone who actually entered the contest to be part of this competition, and also want to thank the Daly City Lions Club for hosting this annual event. And then I just want to say that these pictures are great, and I think I will have to see even better pictures, even more amazing kind of artwork next year, so keep up the good job and feel like.
And I, too, would like to say thank you to the Daly City Host Lions Club and the partnership we've had for these many years, and it is our pleasure to host this opportunity to award these students for their wonderful images of peace and the different depictions of that, and it's a message that we all need. And these pictures are on our district Facebook page, so it's a scrolling slideshow there, and we have a link to these photos off of our district webpage, too. So if you want to see them again, you can go to either of those places so you can look at them more carefully.
Thank you, Mr. Carlos, and thank you to all of you for putting in the effort and work, thanks to all the students, all the students who participated, whether you want or not. It's fantastic, and I really feel blessed by this being this evening with this outpouring of peace and the images and ideas that you children have of the peace that our world can see and know. And I want to thank you again, and thank you for coming out tonight. Let's give them one more round of applause. We have a question for the Lions Club. Does this contest go further, or is this just, is this only Daly City's group and contest?
Each of the first place winners moved on to what we call the district, which is San Francisco, San Mateo Counties, and Palo Alto, and will be judged, and the first place winner from that group will go on to the state of California, and then it goes on to Lions Clubs International, where it's judged against the whole world, so.
Wow. All right, well then.
All right, we're hoping for it.
Best luck to our first place winners as you continue on.
Yeah.
All right.
My prayers.
Okay.
Amazing.
I think we'll, since you're all stuck standing and there isn't seating, I will say at this time that I recognize that you probably need to go home and finish your homework if people would like to do that. Usually I make you wait until after we've had our communications section, but because there isn't seating, I think I'll let you make your way out if you'd like to, or make your way back to your seats.
Is there a way to open that? There's too much.
Too much, yeah.
All right. That's a good problem.
So we'll just take a moment and let things settle. If I can ask, however, as you move into the lobby, if you keep it quiet, because we will be continuing the meeting. Okay. Okay. We'll let him get just a little farther near. Yes, that was. But then I'd see a couple of the others came. got the photo op back there, and then we'll be able to resume the meeting. Okay. He's on his way back around to the other room. So, bringing us to Section 7 Communications, persons wishing to address the board. I do have a speaker card from Ms. Melinda Dart.
Hi, Melinda Dart, AFT 3267, and I want to thank everyone in this room and the community that's unfortunately now in that room for voting for Measure T for the schools. That was excellent. And it's just great to see that kind of support for our schools, to pass a local funding measure at almost 75 percent is just amazing, and it really shows how the community does support our schools, and it makes us feel really good, right? And also Prop 55, which also will guarantee a stream of funding, because we weren't going to be able to go on without that one, without drastic cuts, so. And at the same time, I was at FDR today, and I came across students that were very upset with the national results, so. And I saw wonderful teaching and also counseling going on there, you know, allowing students to speak up about their concerns, and I think we really need to protect a message that we are here for all of our students and that schools are safe places, and it might be a good message to go out to all of us in the whole district at this time, because I know that those students that spoke up, there are many more that aren't speaking up and that have the same fears. So unfortunately, that's going to be around, so we need to, I think we need to address that and make people feel safe. I also want to say that some of us attended a conference way back in October on labor management collaboration, and the reason that we went was because studies show, and in fact, we sat through a long, long slideshow of the effect, the beneficial effects of labor management collaboration. Basically, in a nutshell, it raises student achievement, and it improves school climate when district and, you know, all parties are working together. In this case, the AFT is a partner in this district, and, you know, it's really beneficial when we work together as partners. And Mr. Shaquille Ali was present at that conference, and I'm just thinking into the future, if we're going to move forward, I think the board needs to, you know, think about that as a avenue to pursue, to move forward. We have ways of beginning that within the district, with mostly involving meetings and talking to each other, but we will need leadership coming from the board on down, leadership around labor management, around community schools, as we begin to work on that, on restorative justice, on technology. So I think the board should really think about these things and choose a leader who is, you know, poised to help us go down those paths. Thank you very much.
Well, much of what I would say, I would echo Ms. Dart's, what she expressed. I do want to say that, what timing for the peace poster contest and all the participants, not just the ones that won, and anybody who even thought about it. Peace and safety go hand in hand, and I want every student to always feel safe at our schools and at every school in this country, but we're in charge of this school district, and this is where our charge is, and we will do everything that we can to keep our children safe at all times. Also, I want to thank the community for supporting Measure T and bringing it to, again, to our students, because the future community is our students, and so I want to thank everybody.
I also want to reiterate the excitement about Measure T, and just to let everyone know that we're gathering resources to support our students as a result of the election, and so we're going to be sharing some of those tomorrow with staff, just to support some of the anxiety that might be occurring with some students, and then also to let families know that next Tuesday is our Parent Involvement Advisory Committee meeting. It is at the district office at 6:00. We'll have pizza. And then we also, our Local Control Accountability Plan, we have a survey from our district, so that it's, one of our measures is parent engagement and, you know, looking at the school climate, and so there's a survey that has been distributed this week or last week, and so we encourage all families to complete this survey. It's a really important survey for us to gather so that we know how we're doing in our schools, so that we can make improvements, and it helps us with our LCAP development and put funding towards some of the activities and ideas that we get from this survey.
Yeah, I just wanted to piggyback on what Melinda was talking about, the conference we went to back in October. I actually was looking at my calendar, was that before the last meeting? But it was great. We have Mr. Ali, Mr. Vidalas, myself, Mr. Turner, Mr. Allen, several representatives besides Melinda. We have Paul Hagan, Ms. Francisco, and it was just a good group of people, and it's been growing exponentially over the last few years. And one of the two things I walked away with, one was that collaboration, you think, hey, it's about getting along. It's really about learning how to disagree and move forward. And secondly, they say practice with things you agree on, so you can really build those skills, so I'm looking forward to continuing to work with everybody on that.
Okay, board member acknowledgements and commendations?
Can you start down here? Because you just made me think of something.
Okay, so we're going to start with Mr. Jefferson.
No, you made me think of something. My notes.
I just want to thank the community.
I just want to thank the community as well for getting Measure T passed. I know it's a huge part in making sure that our community has a stable funding source. So I just want to thank all the volunteers, people who knocked on doors, held signs in front of schools, told their parents, family members, and just people in the community about how important Measure T is for just making sure that our school district is financially stable and financially sound. So I just want to thank all, everyone for that as well.
Okay. I changed my clothes from yesterday. However, I put my sticker back on. I worked out at the polls and so I saw so many people coming in excited to vote. And I was really pleased to see the results. And I'm really happy that we were able to pass our measure and as well as Prop 55, which was also extremely important. But I also want to put a real big thank you to Melinda and Elaine Francisco because they saw the vision a long time ago. That at one time, I think, everybody had their place. The parents were here, school boards here, teachers were here. But they helped bring everyone together so that we know what the needs are for each other and we support each other as a team, rather than this, this group is here and this group is there. So I want to thank you because that was really the beginning, Melinda. And it, I think we grew, we got more of our parents to trust and believe everything that we're doing. And that really was a big thing. And, and we also reached out to the community. Because some of them think, I don't have kids in school, or this or that. But we reached out to, and we'll find that education now is passing, I think, in every school district. Because they've finally got the message that we're a team and we work together. So we can only do better and better. And the things that you spoke of, it's going to come about because we all want the best for all of the children in our schools, in fact, for all children, no matter where they are. So I know there's a lot more to do, but I think we're ready to embrace every step of everything that we do. So I'm really pleased. I was really excited because there were so many measures on the ballots. And I hate to think what I thought was going to get the most votes of anything, but it, I don't know if it did or not, but I think it did. But I won't say that. But anyway, but at least education is out front, really important. And that, that, we, we deserve that. We deserve to have the respect of everything, of all the teachers, of all the administrators, even the board members, because we, we're there taking the heat sometimes. But we are a team. Without a team, you don't win. So thank you to everyone who was a part of it. And I think all the sessions we had explaining, you know, LCAP and explaining all the things to the parents that they didn't understand really helped a lot. So we brought them into the picture of what education is about. So enough of that, I could go on for hours, but I'm, I'm very happy about it.
We'll continue to do so.
Oh, yes.
Like the meeting which Ms. McCulley just announced. I also would like to thank the community for passing Measure T. And I want to specifically thank the committee that pulled that off. And I know we've got a couple of members of that committee here tonight, of course, Ms. Melinda Dart, Clayton Koo. Huge thanks to Rosie Tejada for heading up the activities on that and pulling that off for us. I also, stretching back, because it has been a month since our last meeting. I realized I've been to a few things at some schools and I wanted to put out some kudos to a couple of schools for a couple of events that I was able to attend that were really great. One that was very near and dear to my heart was the Eagle Olympics at M.H. Tobias. A fantastic event. I was there when that had its first, first started, the year that my oldest son was in kindergarten. And I'm not going to say how long ago that was, because I don't have my fingers. But it's amazing to see how the event has evolved, how the new generation of parents has made it into a fantastic coming together for the school as, as a day where the students are engaged in, in activities to nurture the mind, body, and spirit. I also was able to see the family game night at Garden Village two weeks ago. Somewhere, somewhere in that range. And that was also really great. In spite of the fact that it was a horrifically rainy night, there was a pretty good turnout. People were enthusiastic and excited. The kids were having a great time with the games. The, I think it was the PTA and was the union involved in funding that as well? Gave away the games at the end of the night to the families so that kids could keep playing the games. What a, what a great thing to see the, coming out and seeing that modeling of how to engage as a family and play together and learn together and be a, be a group together. So I just wanted to give some kudos, shout outs to those schools for those things.
We include another thing that I forgot to say? I just wanted to thank Melinda and AFT for the books that were given away. That was a tremendous, I don't remember.
I think that was before the last.
Was it?
Yes, it was. We did thank them.
But I wanted to say it trailed over because I got to take some books down to, probably we passed out more to the students when they had their festival.
And in fact, they passed out still more at the game night.
Yeah, yeah. So thank you because.
They'll need more. That gift is still giving.
That was really fantastic.
Okay, Mr. Vidalis, can we have correspondence and comments?
Not many. I think everyone here has already expressed what I would have expressed. But yes, tremendously happy that Measure T passed. I don't know if it's the first local funding measure in our district, but it certainly is the first one since I've been around. And it's nice to know that we have that additional flexibility to be able to save and protect our valuable programs that we've just been putting into place, especially the next couple of years when our expenses are going to outpace our new income. Prop 55 is also wonderful. It's nice to know that the community supports education and our schools. And yes, like, we have plans of making a community message to our families, students, and our staff around the importance of safe schools. And that is one of our board goals and district goals and just communicating that in light of some of the feelings, anxieties that different members of our community might be feeling during this time.
Thank you. Section 8, General Functions, let me consent agenda. Could I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to accept, to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second that. Any favor? Any opposition?
Okay, down to item F. Call for nominations for the CSBA Delegate Assembly. This is for information. The administration recommends that we consider nominating local board members to the CSBA Delegate Assembly if there are any board members so interested. I need to let the rest of us know so we can sort the paperwork.
Yes, so the, the whole application packet is attached as part of your agenda. If there is somebody that a board member would like the board, the whole board to consider nominating, I would need all of that by the 5th of December so that we can get it ready to present at the next meeting. Since the deadline for this is Saturday, January 7th. So if you would like to nominate, like the board to consider nominating somebody, I would need all of that backup application paperwork by, I believe, the 5th. Is that a Friday? It might be.
You're looking at Monday?
Yeah, I don't know. I'm trying to count back the days. Maybe it's a Monday. I believe it's a Monday.
I think it's a Monday.
Yes, yes, yeah. It's a Monday. Because that, yeah, I did make it a Monday because that gives you a weekend to complete the paperwork.
So if, if any of you are interested, I certainly would not presume to nominate anyone who doesn't express an interest in, in doing that service.
Anybody want?
You don't just have to nominate from among our board. You may nominate board members in our region, I believe. So if you want to approach somebody about nominating them, that would be fine as well.
What do we have? We have.
Item G, Proposed Board Meeting Dates for 2017. We do not actually vote on this until the December 14th meeting, but we wanted to put this out for a little discussion tonight because of some changes that are needed early in the year. I'll see if I can bring up the.
Yeah, and I think, so the only thing I just wanted to, to bring up today, just for discussion, the first three meetings of the new year are slightly off the second and fourth, at least what we're proposing. And some of the reasons for that is the fourth meeting in February is during our president's week holiday. So, and then the, the second Wednesday in February is a week that I am out of town. So that didn't work. And that's why I recommended February 1st and February 15th for February. And then we just pushed it back two weeks prior to January 18th for the first one in January. And I think that gives us enough time. Everything else is on a second and fourth Wednesday, except again in July and August. We only have to meet once during the summer months. We have that in our board bylaws. But I put July 19th in there because this is personal. But July 26th is my 25th wedding anniversary. So if we make it, if we, if we make it to then, then I will, I will be busy. So anyway, so that's why I moved it to July 19th. But, you know, another week in July can work as well. Just as, and again, like if, I do not ask the board to meet unless there's business that needs to be taken care of. And so if it turns out in July, there's not much to do and everything can wait, we'll likely do that as well.
But we can always, if something comes up, we can decide.
There's always a special meeting. Yeah, I will, I will get out a little form to you guys to tell me when you're out of town, just in case we need a special meeting.
Now, the February 1st meeting is, I always hate to see something on the very first because it's like people don't even turn the calendar back yet. So we really have to get some extra special messages out to let people know about it. Because it is like, it always seems like it takes until about the third day, realize, oops, I forgot to turn my calendar.
We'll make sure certainly all of you get reminded.
Well, exactly.
But then other people too.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, and of course, the rationale for the meeting in January not being on the second Wednesday is not only to balance it there, but because that second Wednesday comes too soon after.
The holiday week.
The winter holiday break. And our district office team is amazing, but they do have to have time to put these things together.
It makes sense to me as a meeting every two weeks, so that it's easy to remember.
So that works reasonably well through there. Yeah. Okay, so that was just a.
Yeah, just for converse, just a little bit. And of course, let me know if there's any conflicts or anything. We can see if we can work something out. But I especially just wanted to get those first three on our calendars because I didn't want us to get into the holidays and start making plans and then come back and find out.
Find out that we're supposed to be in board meetings.
So we'll vote on these then in, at our December meeting to approve.
Okay. Item H, CSBA Annual Conference Ticketed Meal Functions and Scheduling Board Reports. At the June 22nd, 2016 Board Meeting, the Board approves sending all five board members to the CSBA Annual Conference, December 1 through 3 in San Francisco. There will be discussion, or we need to discuss, determine whether board members would also like to attend the ticketed meal functions at the conference or any of the ticketed meals. The cost of attending a breakfast function is $72 and luncheon is $92. And we should also at this time schedule our member reports and of the conference in January and February. So I understand we have at least one board member who would like to attend at least one.
Yeah, there are several, there are several board members who expressed interest. So I did not feel comfortable saying yes or no, since that's not something we've done recently. So I wanted the board to have that opportunity to discuss if they wanted to help sponsor, help pay for some of that or pay fully for any of that.
Yeah, it was the, just for, for information out there, that the ticketed meal things are an extra cost, but these are also part of the, the networking and education that goes on at the conference for those who engage in them. And I think that that's a legitimate expense. The San Francisco CSBA Conference is a great deal less expensive to us than when it's in San Diego. So I think we can certainly afford to do that from our, our conference budget.
Well, having attended for many, many years, I would say that it's gotten extremely expensive. There, I just, I thought it was a typo when I saw this.
I know. And they say that's just passing on the expense that the hotel charges too.
Yeah, but you know what? San Francisco, San Francisco, but, you know. But it, it is extremely expensive. For this conference, yes, we're paying less because we don't have to pay for hotels. So if it's something that's, I, I think we need to look at it each year just to decide, to make sure what it is. But this isn't easier one to go along with because it, we're not paying hotel rooms. But it's just really, I'd, I'd like to write a letter to CSBA and tell them, why can't they give us something better than this? You know? I mean, a lot of districts, I would imagine, are not going to be able to afford it, you know? But at the same time, I know that that's the one time. I think they get some groups together that are, have all the same focus. And so that's important. And I wouldn't want to myself say no to somebody. That's important to go to that. So as long as we can meet in the budget, we're used to going around. We go down to San, I mean, San Diego, we eat out of a paper bag. But, but I do think that some of the, those sessions, if they're extremely important to our district and to help our district, then we need to look at that. So I, I think we need to address what it is. And I think that makes a big difference.
Yes. I'm in full support of funding, you know, whoever wants to go to one of these luncheons. I've never been to one, you know, all the CSBA conferences that I've been to. And I didn't go to San Diego this last time. So we have the money there. I already checked with Mr. Vidalis. And yeah, so I fully support us being able to fund it this time. And we'll find out if it's something that is important enough to do every time.
And I have gone to some of them. And some of them are extremely wonderful.
Right.
And some of them are sponsored by different ethnic groups. And it's important for us, the way I look at it, to, to know what their needs are. Because we would have the same needs here with our children. So it is important. I don't want it to appear that it's just going to a luncheon. Oh, boy, we're going to spend $90 on, what do we call it when we go there? Rubber chicken?
At that price, they'd rather not be serving rubber chicken.
Well, we went to one one time and it was not too cool. But the idea is they're putting people together in a room and having a guest speaker and probably the cost of that guest speaker comes into the cost of the, of the luncheon, I would imagine.
Yes.
But if it is something that's going to be important that we can bring back to the district, and I agree with Mr. Vidalis, that should be also a part of a presentation back to the board. So we can learn from others what was said about that particular group of, of the needs. Okay, so I, I'm not against doing it, but I think, I want to make sure that when we do it each year, that we look at it and, and make sure that it will be in the best interest of our, of our children here.
Does it sound like it would be appropriate then for the district to pay for one event or two events or three? I mean, I don't think we have anyone requesting three, but, or do we just leave it up to a board?
Well, I didn't, I didn't.
So are you saying? One ticketed meal function?
Yeah, you saw, there's maybe a board member that wanted to go to more than one ticketed meal function.
There may be, there may be some that, you know, because there are different, different themes to the, to it. So I think it'd be appropriate to say if, if a board member wanted to attend one, that the district could help, could, could cover that.
Yeah, I agree with that.
I think that going beyond one is probably a little excessive.
Well, let me add to that. I, I never even looked at those because we haven't done it for a long time.
Right, right.
So, you know, I may look at it and decide, well, if, if the district now is willing to do this and there's something of importance I can bring back, then, then I, I may possibly do it. Not to eat with the food, it's, the food's not good. But anyway, so, but I do think that if only one person is going and they are able to go to two, then we might make that decision to say, well, since one person is going or only two, then maybe that would be all right. So let's not get into a thing that stifles.
Yeah, so I agree.
Okay, does that make sense?
I just need direction because I don't want someone to ask me and I want to be able to know how to answer.
So I, I move that we.
We don't have to vote on this. You just, you just discuss it and everyone say, yeah.
So up to two, we'll say up to two for now?
Well, let's, let's have people request what they want to attend.
And then see.
And then we can see and we can make the decision.
We do need to order this before the next meeting.
The conference is before our next meeting.
Oh, okay.
So that's why I said up to two.
So we do need to.
Up to two per member?
Per person limit.
Okay.
Okay. That's sufficient. And then the scheduling, the, the presentations to the board. The CSBA Conference happens early enough this year that you would, someone, not you, but someone might be ready to do it at the December 14th meeting?
Oh, no, not me.
And then they have, we have the meeting in January, and then we have two in February, so if we want to, and I would say, Ms. Lea Nganu Ie is not here, so she probably will not be the first one, so we could, we could, we could assign her one of the other ones.
I'm pretty willing actually to present on the fourteenth. I think the sooner the better, as far as getting all this stuff out of my head and sharing it, before it gets lost in there. So, and probably, that meeting is sometimes, well, I guess, no, we don't have any people to seat, so it's not a, it's not such a, I say it might be better to only do one that night.
Yeah, I think only one on that night, because we do have our first dinner room to do that night.
Ah, okay, yeah.
Was the first dinner?
First dinner room budget report on, on December fourteenth.
And I will do my ten-minute presentation. We could maybe have two volunteers to present at the January meetings.
How about one then as well? Because we have, we have a governor's budget, as well as our audited actuals.
Oh, okay, so we need one for January.
Shaquille. All right, then we can probably do two.
Two on, on the first of February?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sure.
Okay, I'll do that.
So we get, okay.
Turn the calendar.
And then.
And we'll, since.
Ms. Lea Nganu Ie can have the fifteenth.
The fifteenth.
Okay. Okay, wonderful, thank you. I, I guess, it does say action, so maybe we do take an action.
Yeah.
Okay, well, do you want to make a motion?
I just, should we, I mean, it says action, but we don't have to.
You don't have to.
I, I don't think any of these things actually require us to make it, so, yeah.
We can do this without board action.
We can, we can consider that we have been active.
Yes.
Okay.
Or even proactive, perhaps.
Well, since Ms. Lea Nganu Ie is not here, then I definitely don't want to vote on it.
Yeah, right.
I think she has two months to prepare.
Yeah, as you say, so that's why we gave her up to the, to the latest. Okay. So, we are in section nine, Curriculum and Instruction. Item C, Special Education Department Updates and Special Day Class Curriculum Adoption. Director James Adams, Director of Special Ed, will share updates about the Special Education Department, review of curriculum pilot process, and recommend the adoption of a Common Core aligned curriculum for special day classes. Administration recommends approval of the adoption of the Unique Learning System published by N2Y for special day class instruction for use in pre-K through eighth special day classes.
Thank you, members of the board. Mr. Vidalis. Assistant Supes, tonight, my voice is getting a little scratchy, excuse me, it's just allergies, I'm not getting sick, but we're just updating again. Remember, I came here before to talk a little bit about our progress that we're doing here in special education, and the overall plan is what we're doing is, as county is decreasing some of their programs for some of our students with more significant needs, we're serving those students more and more in district. So just kind of a reminder of our program, and these are some of the, excuse me, some of the faculty and staff that we have in our program. I made a special point here to talk about our mental health psychologist, so what we're starting to do is provide all that mental health for our kids within special ed, within district. We get that money reimbursed from the county, so we built our own program. If we want to take a look here briefly, excuse me, you can notice that some of our special day classes, we have some increases that have gone on there. You'll see later why those increases have happened. Basically, students are staying within our district. They're not going down to San Mateo County. Some of our kids were, you know, going all the way to Redwood City, or sometimes further south. Also, non-public schools, those have decreased. So we have had some increase in our special education students served within district that parents are very happy with, right? Imagine if you had to go to an IEP, and your child is all the way in Redwood City. Now you can go to a, a school within our district. Our resource specialist program, we have a, a bit of a decrease in some of the students. This is part of our MTSS, so as students are getting interventions and other types of modifications and things in their classroom, right now, we're seeing a little bit of a decrease in some of the students that, being identified. We also see speech students, that's, some increases are happening there, because there's a better referral process for preschoolers. So physicians, as well as regional centers, are really identifying kids much younger now, who have speech delays and things like that, and we're assessing them and providing services to those kiddos. The last thing you see there also, is you see there's a big increase in the number of kids who receive mental health in district. So it's not necessarily there's more kids getting it, it's just that we provide it in district. That means at their school site, we have school psychologists that provide it at their home school. They visit them. So they don't go off to community mental health to be HRS, like they used to do. Now those are provided within district.
Great.
So what you can see here also is we have a decrease in kids going to consortium. Consortium, if you recall, are students in other districts where we paid the other district to basically educate our students, and there's very few students in that. That means we are serving those students in-house, so you can see how the increase in our special day classes went up. Well, here's a decrease where part of those students are being served within district. And also, non-public schools, these are specialized schools where we have one decrease, so about ten kids right now that are in non-public schools, specialized, special ed program schools. So we continue to make good progress. I think it was an excellent idea that Cabinet has really offered in trying to put together special education with curriculum and instruction, to sit together and work and plan. That meets the needs mostly of students, we continue to do that. We still have had a really great process where we've created a procedure manual, so staff and, and teachers and whomever can go on to this drive, well, of course, they have to work for us, obviously, and have a Gmail account, they can see our procedures, how to do things, what's to happen next. We continue to have professional development around this, and it's really panning out, in that we continue to have very good response to people, staff and teachers feeling that they can get their needs answered quickly. Some of the things that we've done, just to highlight, is that increasingly, we're integrating our, our resource specialists and teachers to understand what the general education teachers do in their classrooms. For a, a long time, they weren't always kept, kept in the loop about what was happening in their general ed classroom. So we've partnered, and, and coaches have been helping us, and we've had our institute day where they actually participated with general ed peers. They were there with their paraprofessionals, their SKIAs also, to help them learn this piece. So as you can see, we've been doing this, of increasingly integrating our RSP and special ed teachers to understand more about what general ed is doing, because as we know, the goal is to, to serve kids in the least restrictive environment. That means mostly in their general education classroom. That means our specialists need to know what general education is, is doing.
Can I slow you down just a second?
Oh, yeah. I'm just looking.
So what you're talking about right now, once the, the special ed student, I mean, teachers and pairs are learning what the general ed teachers are doing, how is it then adjusted, or is it adjusted? Does each teacher just adjust themselves, or do you give them guidance on how to then translate it for their specific class? Or is it just the same?
I'm not quite sure I understand the question, but let me see if this is what, what your question is. Are you asking me if the resource specialist, once they learn what the general education teachers are doing, how do they use that information to modify for their special ed students?
Yes.
Yeah, so definitely, so that's really, there's been a disconnect in that piece.
All right.
So what's been happening is, our, our resource specialists have been very good at providing remediation or other types of skills that may not been aligned to what they're doing in their classroom. So it's helping them, but it makes, so students basically have sometimes extra work.
Right.
Right? So they want to learn more increasingly what's going in the classroom, so they can blend together what the students are already doing, so they're, it's more authentic, if that makes sense.
Yes.
So, so it's happening through curriculum, curriculum and instruction, through some of the specialists that we have in our program, our coaches, we don't call them coaches, but we have program coordinators, and we have an inclusion specialist, people like that, that help the teachers, and of course, we do that during our specialized staff meeting.
All right. So is it mainly the objectives in aligning it with Common Core, or is it about the specific lessons that they're teaching?
Exactly, that's a very good question. So, and that's really important as we come to the end about Unique. So what we are doing is, all goals for kids within special ed are written toward the Common Core standards. They're already done like that. So when they write a goal for a student, they are written that way.
All right.
Okay? However, we want to make sure that they're using Common Core standards and have access to the tools that general education students have, and understand those tools, so they can use them to help students have access, through accommodations, modifications, and it could be some discreet types of learning that they need to do, maybe pull them out or push into the classroom to help them understand or modify that assignment to their level.
All right.
That's a great question.
All right, thanks.
Sure. So I was just talking a little bit about how we have compliance every year. Last year, we did an excellent job. We have really been looking at training, support, procedures, and teamwork to be able to create this compliance for our district. And these are, you know, data pools that happen for us to make sure that we're having IEPs on time, that we're sending out goals and objectives, that we're testing kids on time, right? This is all regulated by the state, and that's really what we're looking at for compliance. We did quite well last year, we didn't have any compliant complaints for us, meaning we met all our timelines. Do you have our next pool? Thank you.
That's true.
Great job. I'm very proud of everyone working very hard on that. We do have another pool coming up here in December. When I say pool, that means they send Mr. Vidalis a list of what, what errors we have first, then he forwards that to me. Sometimes they're very simple errors, sometimes what happens is we inherit errors. So sometimes kids move from San Francisco or other districts that, maybe that school didn't test the kid on time, and then we have to respond that way and write basically, whether it was our fault or not, basically. But we'll just move on there. So really, what we're doing is we're trying to focus on defining a service delivery model to keep kids close to home, but not necessarily placing kids in their home school, but also trying to think about aligning district classes based on needs, not necessarily location. That's a little bit different. When I came in, what happened is we used to keep kids just in their home school and in that special day class, and teachers were sharing with me that sometimes they felt like it was very hard, the spread might have been different, or it was very hard to accommodate all those students, so we're really careful about where kids might go. We always think first, can this kid be closest to home? Meaning, if a kid lives near Polisita, are we sending them to FDR? Right? And if we are, we want to think very carefully about why we're doing that. We like to keep them as close to home as we can. But they're all now within San Mateo, they're all within Jefferson School District, where before, they would be in San Mateo County, right? So they'd be going down to Redwood City, or San Bruno, or other places like that. So that's a big change of us trying to think very carefully about goals and objectives, about students' needs, because from my background, you know, as a school neuropsych, we don't want to just think about a kid's eligibility, autism, it's a huge spectrum, right? Kids have different needs, so we want to think more about what they actually need, and then provide that support that way.
So with that, are certain schools focused on meeting different needs than other schools, or are they able to meet them differently, or how does that work?
That's a good question. It's not necessarily that each school has a different need, we're just trying to make sure we have balance within classrooms, that teachers have the resources and skills that they need to do it. So it's not like, for example, all of our classes are what we call cross-gaugurcal. That means that kids may have different disabilities within those programs.
Right.
But there might be some kids that are more likely to always have functional curriculum, meaning that they, you know, are functioning well, well below their chronological age, right? Some still might be toileting at fifth grade, for example. Those students, we are thinking about, okay, this classroom over here has toileting, we have, so that might be what we think about.
All right, there you go.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
But we don't have like, well, one, it's illegal to place kids just on disability, so we don't do that. But more importantly, we're placing them on needs, on functional needs, and ideas about how to support kids, if that makes sense.
Yes, it helps.
Yeah. Anytime, you can always reach out to me. We can go take a look and see what's going on.
All right.
So increasingly, what we're doing is planning to support RSP teachers and general ed teachers, and that's what we just talked about, and trying to continue, we did some training for general ed teachers before about accommodations and how to use technology. That's something else we're really thinking strongly about. So, you know, ongoing, we're trying to make sure, we also have a special ed leadership team that tries to look at working with parents, working with our leadership team to understand what our policy should be, what our procedure should be, we build them together and collaboratively to be able to meet the needs of our students within our district. So again, some of our goals, like, Mr. Ali, you were just saying, you know, RSP, everything, even for kids who have significant disabilities, we still write goals toward the Common Core. Okay, so for kids who have resource specialists, those are kids that usually have, they're more easily able to access the core curriculum with modifications, accommodations, maybe technology, okay? And again, we're aligning them to be able to work better with their general ed peers as collaborators, and so that's one of those goals. But the SDC teachers, the special day class teachers, started identifying, okay, we, we know we're supposed to use the Core, right? And we're being told that we need to modify that and differentiate it for our students, but our students have some significant needs, right? And this is very hard for us. So we started looking around, seeing what other programs used, and we came up and we learned a lot about Unique Learning System, which is aligned with the Common Core. It's meant for kids that have developmental disabilities, more significant disabilities, moderate to severe disabilities. And tonight, I'm going to talk a little bit about that, but I also have some people here with me who are using it every day. So we have our program coordinator, and our inclusion specialist, and a teacher who could just briefly kind of give you an idea of how I feel remarkable this program is, how people are using it, how kids respond to it. And so we piloted this in the beginning of the year, okay? And so now we're looking at this program called Unique, and what I'm going to do is ask Ms. Sumita Vasala to come up, she's our program coordinator, just to kind of introduce it, and then we have some other people that she'll introduce, just to talk to us a little bit about how this program runs, because it's better to hear from people using it every day, I feel.
Yes. Good evening. I'm Sumita, I'm the program coordinator. And with me, I have Angelina, she's the inclusion specialist, and Catherine St. Marie, she's the K-2 SDC teacher at Fernando, I'm sorry, FDR.
Yeah, I know how it goes.
Unique is, where's the slide? The next. Okay, the next one, please. Unique is actually an online-based Common Core state standard learning system, and go back to the previous one now, it was, yeah. So it essentially offers a multimodality curriculum, so kids can get up, they can participate, they get print material, there is a lot of tactile movement, the teachers can have them move around in groups, et cetera, and then they're able to use the tech tub, which carries six iPads, and so the kids can do print, the kids can work on the iPad, the kids can work on the computer, so it transfers over many different areas. And then the Unique is also available to speech pads, so they can use the applications, you know, as assistive technology, and it becomes a speech generating device then, so the kids are able to participate. And this is for the moderate, profound, you know, you know, children who have those needs. And so Angelina and Catherine will talk a little more about what they do with it.
So there are four components to the Unique Learning System, and that is our core curriculum, the Unique Curriculum, News to You, Symbol Sticks Prime, and then there's also extras offered with the program. And so the Unique Curriculum, as Ms. Vasala touched on, has a lot of interactive lesson plans in the areas of English Learners Arts, Math, Social Studies, and Science. There are four grade bands that we're using within district right now, which is pre-K, K to two, three to five, and six to eight, and within each of those bands, there are three levels of differentiated instruction for our classroom students. News to You is a weekly current events newspaper, and for example, this week, the article is talking about our U.S. election, so it really helps the students keep up with what's going on in the world. The Symbol Sticks program is an icon library, which has been really, really useful for our classroom teachers. They can use the icons to make classroom schedules, visual supports, incentive cards, just tons of uses within the classroom. And then the extras that are provided are supplemental lessons for the areas of communication, behavior, fine motor development, and gross motor development. So kind of just a total package for our students' academic and social needs. So kind of just a total package for our students' academic and social needs.
And you're teaching what grades again?
Oh, I'm the inclusion specialist, but I was previously teaching third through fifth. SDC, of course. And so again, like, you know, we are really highlighting the fact that this is a curriculum that we're able to use. It aligns with the Common Core State Standards and in addition to the mandates of IDEA. The lesson plans have instructional targets for each activities. There's a routine breakdown for the teacher who can then instruct the students according to their different levels. And the lessons are all theme related. So for this month, our English Learners Arts, Math, Scientist, Social Studies is all related to outer space. So it's nice to have that alignment throughout all the subjects. And then did you want to go into a little bit about how you're using it in the classroom?
Hi, I'm Catherine. I'm teaching SDC K two at FDR. Something that we're doing this week is we're reading a book called In the Sky. And the students are recognizing and comparing things that they'll see in the daytime in the sky and then also at night. And we're using the iPads to read the story and the kids are so excited because they can press the arrow button to turn the page. There's a little button at the bottom where if they press it, the text will read aloud. And they're always, my turn, my turn to press it, you know? So we'll listen to a page multiple times because they all want to do that. And it's so exciting to see their enthusiasm. And then at the end, there's comprehension questions and they can use, it's fill in the blank. And once, when they press the box, it gives them options. And I really like that because a lot of my students really struggle with handwriting and grip. So it's, if it was a paper pencil worksheet, they really have a hard time showing what they're learning or showing what they understand. But this fill in the blank idea on the iPad is so easy. And it really, it's easy for them to show what they know, what they're understanding.
All right, so as Ms. St. Marie just mentioned, all of the lessons are really interactive. There are multiple choice selections available, matching text entry and drag and drop responses. In addition, there are also sound cues for the students. If they get an answer right, they get this positive sound. If they get the answer wrong, it's like a silly sound. So the kids really enjoy the interactive aspects of the program. And as we said earlier too, there are multiple means of presenting the information. There's on screen, there's text to speech, and then there's also extension activities you can do with experiments in the classroom for the science aspect, as well as written opportunities for expression. And so one of the really great components of the curriculum is that we're able to do a lot of data tracking within the program. And so there are four parts that we'll touch on here. There are the benchmark assessments, which really helps the teachers gather data on their students at the beginning of the school year when they're just getting to know their new students. And then they can monitor their progress throughout the school year based on what they first gathered at those beginning benchmarks. There's also skill tracking, which allows the teachers to track individual skills for their students' IEP goals. And again, that will track for the whole year. And then there's also the monthly checkpoints, which are based on the curriculum themes for the month and the lessons that will be taught. And so there's a pre and post assessment, which really helps show what these students were able to understand and learn from the different lessons. And kind of an extra feature is the core rubrics, which also gives different baselines for areas such as vocation, communication, self advocacy, daily living and social strategies.
So, you know, again, you probably can tell we're sort of, it's very excited about this. Because this allows our kids who have communication problems, we're using technology to help them communicate. The goal, the research shows, kids who have a lot of behavioral challenges are struggling to communicate. Behavior is a communicative intent, right? So the more we give them choices, the more we allow them to communicate, the icons are symbols that they understand. The nice thing when you're talking about, wherever a kid would go in the district, of all teachers at all grades of SDC are using this, it's a common way that they all understand. They can walk in, the teacher can take some benchmark data and figure out what to do and move forward. So we're very excited about it. Of course, it demands a lot of our time and attention, right? When you start a new program curriculum. Some of us are better with technology than others, so some of us need more time. And we really want to create a very open and supportive environment for teachers to say, I'm really struggling with the technology or I prefer print or whatever it might be, just so that they might start using it. So we really liked, wanted to explain what the program is, maybe more detailed than, but we're just excited for it. And it's the best thing is it's amazing for our students. To be honest, they weren't even getting anything like this in our county programs. And so we really feel good about the programs that we're putting together for them here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I kind of did have questions, but honestly, you, through your presentations, all of you, you answered my questions. My main question was going to be, how excited are you about this new curriculum?
I think you just answered that.
You know, so yeah, it's been answered. And I just wanted to say thanks for all the work that you've done, because I know when you first came, you know, we were, the board was very assertive with you about what had been going on with our special ed department. So I'm really excited now. So thanks for putting in that work and thanks to all of you.
Thank you. It's the teachers and staff that really are dedicated and that's really makes a difference.
Yes.
No, I can just say that I don't think we've ever had a presentation so, you know, right down to the point where we can understand it, you know? I want to thank you for bringing that to us. And I will say that special ed has been a very difficult program, I think, to really show a lot of success. And I think we see it now. And while you mentioned it, the teachers have always been dedicated. But I think the leadership hasn't been as what we expected. So thank you for all that you're doing. I know we were able to fill in more positions that help make this work. So we'll take a little kudos for that. But the idea is, it seems like it's something that's really working and should have been here a long time ago. So thank you for all that you're doing and we are proud of you. So keep up the good work. It can only produce our students even better.
Independence is our goal. Students should be independent and that's really what we strive for.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks for the presentation. I just love the presentation in terms of discussing all the interactivity and how you can use data analysis to kind of track performance. I was actually wondering in the future, if you guys come back again, can you guys actually give us like maybe like a demonstration, maybe? Because you guys were talking about how the students love clicking the buttons and it kind of. And then like how like certain sounds kind of are cues for students. So I thought that'd be kind of interesting for us to see as well as other people as well.
Absolutely. And I think that.
I'm sure Unique would like that.
And you know, and one of the points that, you know, Sumita brought up, which I think is really important, is that our speech pathologists are using those same tools to help kids. So, and we have, so we'll have some people come in, we'll plan that, we'll have some speech paths and teachers come in and show what that looks like. Because there's different people who interact, interface with this program. And I think it'd be good to see how they use it, depending on their discipline.
Great, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you all again for great presentation.
So.
We need action on this to formally adopt this program for use in our pre-K through eighth grade special day classes.
So I actually had a question for Mr. Vidalis about that. So we don't need to put any extra money towards this? I mean, the money is already there for what's.
Well, we have money set aside for textbook adoptions and that's.
Oh, this is from that, all right.
That would be used from that fund.
All right.
All right, then we have a motion.
I'd like to make a motion then that we adopt the social education curriculum, curriculum adoption. Am I saying that correctly?
Unique learning system.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, so for the approval of the Unique Learning System published by NY, N two Y, for special day classes, instruction to be used in the pre-K through the eighth grade special day classes.
Second.
And we have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And I hear no opposition.
And the nice thing is, I'll just have to add one more thing, the nice thing is that we haven't been hearing complaints.
I was thinking the same thing.
And so something, that always means something's going right, you know? So thank you for all that you did and the vision you had and to work hard on this. Thank you so much.
Great, thank you. Okay, section 10, Business and Financial Procedures. Item C, we have contracted services, Helmut Bugoski. Administration recommends approval of the contract with Helmut Bugoski for inspector of record services for TRP Phase two B and three in the amount not to exceed one hundred and twenty-five thousand.
I move that we approve the contract with Helmut Bugoski for inspector of record services for TRP Phase two B and three in the amount not to exceed a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, item D, Resolution number sixteen eleven zero nine, adopting the Uniform Public Construction Cost Accounting Act. And this is sort of part of a suite of resolutions here that we'll work our way through.
Is there a reason that we couldn't vote for them all at one time?
There's no reason why you could not do that.
Okay. If anyone doesn't have any questions, well.
Yes, so then we could go ahead and have a motion for all three of these resolutions.
So I'll make a motion that we adopt Resolution number sixteen eleven dash zero nine, adopting the Uniform Public Construction Cost Accounting Act. I won't read the letters there. And the Resolution number sixteen eleven zero nine A, informal bidding procedures under the Uniform Public Construction Cost Accounting Act. And the last one will be Resolution number sixteen eleven zero nine B, emergency construction under the Uniform Public Construction Cost Accounting Act.
Second.
We have a second. We need to, we'll call both of them, please?
Mr. Ali?
Aye.
Mrs. Brizuela?
Aye.
Mr. Ku?
Aye.
Dr. Douglas?
Aye.
And to take a moment to thank Mr. Vidalis, I called to ask him several questions, a lot of this stuff. And it saved a lot of time here.
We would be here till ten. I took one for all of you. So Ms. Kessler's here and so is Mr. Heath. And I just want to give them just a little bit of time to be able to share just what this will allow our district to do that we've not been able to do, just real briefly.
So actually, I'm very excited and we did do this at my last district. And it will save time and allow us to act quicker. Currently for public works, any public work that is fifteen thousand dollars or more, we have to go out to bid. And I've been doing this for 20 years and I believe it's always been fifteen thousand. It's kind of like the small claims court that almost never gets increased. And yet if it's a maintenance, it was increased every year. It started out fifty thousand and would go, and at this point it's like eighty-seven thousand dollars. But this, for some reason, they've never increased. But they have written this so that we can enjoy the ability to work and get the best deal still for the district, up to forty-five thousand dollars where we can just negotiate an agreement. And between a hundred, forty-five thousand and a hundred and seventy-five thousand, go out for an informal bid. And what we do is we maintain a list of pre-qualified contractors for different trades. And in order to do this, this process, it still has to be competitively bid. So we need at least two qualified, pre-qualified contractors on our list to go out for this informal bid. If we only have one, then we have to go out for a formal bid. And every year, we have to maintain this list, every year we have to publish it in a couple of different publications, national and local, whatever, offering different trades to come and pre-qualify. We don't have to just wait till that time. We can, if we, we know companies that do a good job and we'd like them to pre-qualify, we can contact them and ask them to. And any company that contacted us and asked us to pre-qualify, we would allow them to do that as well. So it allows us to do this without going through this process that is very time consuming because of advertising. And we are actually advertising, we're just doing it all at once and offering it throughout the year. And not just waiting for every job, every single job. So this will allow Mr. Heath and also myself and other individuals to work on areas that are more needed and pre-qualifying these people. And in pre-qualifying these people, these companies, we are also able to eliminate companies that really can, are not qualified to do this job. That might end up with the lowest bid, but not really be very qualified. A big part of the pre-qualification is references. And also doing jobs for school districts at the same level. If somebody's doing a painting job and it's a five thousand dollar job or somebody's doing a five hundred thousand dollar job, it's very different what their abilities might be. So, and in the pre-qualification process, we can also limit them. We can look at their financial makeup of their company and say, you can bid on jobs up to a certain dollar amount. And then after that, you can't unless you resubmit additional documents that would change our minds as to whether you're qualified or not. So I'm very excited about this because our time can be spent doing what we need to do most. And thank you.
Thank you.
And it also allows us to work with emergency situations quickly.
We get things done and fixed and running fast.
I've been around long enough to see the horrible things that happened before, so, whether it was the city or us, because of the bidding, you know? So this is really great. This is really great.
Great, thank you. Okay, section 12, Classified Personnel. Item B, Salary Recommendation for Classified Position of School Resource Coordinator. The administration recommends approval of the salary, annual salary schedule for school resource coordinator at thirty-four dollars and fifteen cents per hour, step one through forty-one dollars, forty-seven cents per hour, step five. The Personnel Commission approved the proposed salary at its October 11, 2016 meeting. And the Governing Board approved the job description at our September 28th, 2016 meeting. So are there any questions about the salary schedule?
Just a slight question. Do you know what they base that salary on?
Yeah, we, I'm sorry. We have the Classified Human Resource Department, we do comparative salary analysis around the area to districts around us. So we just look at them and have a range of salaries and deciding. Now this, because of the nature of this particular position, we had to look pretty far and wide. It wasn't a very common position. And some were in actually certificated positions. But this, we felt was a fairly good balance and that's what the Personnel Commission worked with.
This is.
Actually, they didn't come up with the salary, it came out of your study?
It came out of the study, the comparative study.
So what I really want to make sure and clear is this. Unless the law has changed, the board sets the salary. The commission may agree or disagree if they feel it's out of position with other, you know, out of rank with other positions. But it really is up to the school board, through the administration, to approve it. So it kind of sounds like they just came, said, hey, pay this, no.
Right, that's why I'm glad I asked.
That's why I explained that part of it.
All right, great. We're voting today.
And because this sounds like on the level of a certificated salary.
It's a pretty high level of responsibility.
Right, and so I think that's good. I think that's a good thing. I was just surprised that the Personnel Commission, you know? So that's why I'm glad you're clarifying that, your study, yes. And even to start off, so they're going to start at thirty-four and hopefully stay in the job or they might come in at a different step, how's?
Four to five steps.
It would be five steps.
So do they have to start at step one?
Usually that's where we have.
Yeah, so I was just going to say, because for what we're asking them to do, that, it's fair. I'll just put it that way. It could definitely be even at step five starting. So I think that, I support it.
It, you know, actually comes, falls in line with most of what the commission does. It gives that chance for them to grow.
Uh, yeah, no, I see it, I see it.
So can we have a?
Oh, one, sorry, one more. Is it an hourly position and how many hours is it?
It's an hourly position, I believe it's seven hour.
Ten and a half.
So they'll start at some time like during the middle of the day and extend to after-school hours? How is that going to?
Currently, the actual daily schedule hasn't been established. Like maybe like an eight-thirty to three-thirty position or eight-thirty to three, kind of like a full day at school.
But the school site would set the appropriate, what benefits the program.
The reason why I was asking is because I thought part of this was to be able to supply, I mean, provide some type of services after school as well.
Yeah, for the parents.
And that could be something, that's something that will be established once we. And that could be something, that's something that will be established once we kind of...
Site, on a site-by-site basis, alright.
Like the other positions, it's a five-and-a-half hour, might be something that starts at nine-thirty, or someone that starts at eight-thirty, it's just based on that.
Got you.
So, are you saying it's not a seven-and-a-half hour job, or...
That's full-time check.
Full-time position.
Full-time, so they would be working the full hours?
Oh, yes.
Okay. I want to make sure, you got the question.
The daily schedule might be something...
Different, yeah, that's okay.
Might be staggered, too.
Well, it sounds good. Alrighty, so, I'll make a motion, you have to get approved, make a motion? To approve the classified position of school resource coordinator at...
Third.
Doesn't say, on the salary schedule, I know it says, does it have a number for the salary schedule?
Probably does, but I don't know if we have it on there.
Okay, that's okay, I'll just, I'll wing around it, okay? Step one, thirty-four fifteen through forty-one, forty-seven, at step five, on the classified sal- salary schedule. That's it.
That's it, second.
We have a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, I thought there was a number ahead of it, that's all.
Okay, section thirteen, board policies and administrative regulations. So, we have VP thirty-five twelve, equipment, VP AR forty-one, fifty-one, forty-one, students, first read, and this is a first reading. Anybody has any questions or changes on it? So far, I'm satisfied.
Well, I'm satisfied, and I just think we made a comment before that anytime it's, anything ever says something that doesn't belong, like for older students, we don't have to go through all this and take it out, so I'm satisfied with this one. And this is, this is getting rid of our books and stuff, which was great.
Yeah, the probably most important part in there is brand-new policy on...
Yeah, what, which page is that?
Sexual assault and reporting.
No, that's just, that's in accordance with the law, so...
So we could, if nobody has any questions or changes, we could accept this for a first reading, and carry on to a second reading in our next meeting.
I'll make a motion, we accept the, yeah, I lost my place, hold on. The board policies, regulations for BP thirty-five twelve, and BP, BP AR fifty-one, forty-one, point forty-one, students, first reading, and we'll bring it back at that meeting.
Also the October twenty-fifteen update.
Okay, say it for me?
Yep.
Sure, we'll take this read.
I'll second that.
We have a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, we're getting there, folks. Item fourteen, board member comments, reports, and reflection on board meeting guidelines.
Yes. Well, I just want to just thank all of our, our teachers and administrators that are student-facing, because I was actually at Jefferson High School today, substitute teaching, and the students don't want to talk about anything right now, except for what happened with the national election. And a lot of the students at Jefferson were crying, they're really concerned about being kicked out of the country, and their family members being kicked out, they're obsessed about the wall. So I had to spend a lot of time basically letting them know that one person can't control them, doesn't control me, that there's a system, there's a lot of people that are involved to make decisions and to make serious things happen. So just, I want us all to keep that in mind, that they, and actually, Ms. Dart did mention it earlier, but the students are really feeling anxious and scared right now. So that's part of our job as educators, is to make them feel safe again. So, thank you for the work that you're doing. I focused on the guideline of staying focused on our goals, and avoid getting sidetracked. We will keep our focus on the best interest of the students, and I feel very confident that we are doing that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, since we don't have that many goals, then we do it all the time, I said the same when you did. So, I have to agree that we do stay focused on our goals, and avoid getting pretty much sidetracked, not sidetracked. Okay, so, and I think the most important thing is that everything we focus on relates to the children and their needs, and for that, I think we, we do that the most, so...
I picked, we will build upon ideas of others and look for common ground, we will paraphrase for understanding. We all talked about how important arts was in the classroom as well as special ed, so I thought that worked pretty well for that goal tonight.
I've looked at, we'll work toward the future, learning from the past, and I will allow people to interpret that however they wish. I think that, actually thinking about the special ed presentation, for example, I think that is a great example where we have worked out a difficulty in the past to a future that's looking really good, that's really exciting to see. Okay, I do have one card for somebody wishing to address the board on closed-session items, that would be Ms. Melinda Dart.
Hi, Melinda Dart, AT thirty-two sixty-seven. So now, so now I come before you to talk about health insurance, and the fact that I know you're gonna be considering what to do about it, and I can tell you that we've spent many hours talking about it in our negotiation sessions. So, as you probably know, ninety percent of our members are covered by Kaiser, but thirty-two people are not, and they fall under the Anthem Blue Shield. And as you also know, their rates are set to go up in January. And what you have to picture, I think, is that, you know, even though they're a minority, picture thirty-two of them being right here, and tonight, some of them are here. And to be hit with a mid-year increase in January is new, it's never happened before. And it happens because of the timing of the Affordable Care Act, which maybe that won't be happening in the future, but, you know, we don't know, right, but this year, it is happening, so that their increases will go up. And, and so, you know, it's often thought of, I think, as that the more expensive plan, the choice plan. But the fact is, is that I believe we have to offer a choice, and people have reasons for those choices. You know, they might have had a serious illness, they have relationships with doctors, and sometimes they, they really feel that they must stay with that doctor because of their medical situation, so... So essentially, you're gonna be looking at another proposal, but what, what we are asking for on behalf of those members is that the district commit another twenty to thirty dollars per person to address their out-of-pocket costs. By my calculation, that's about six thousand dollars more, and if we're only, it seems that now we only negotiate six months at a time of health insurance, so we're only talking about from January to June now, so... In other words, it's about three thousand dollars more to address that. I know that the district and the board have another goal, which is to, to make sure that they're spending exactly the same per person for the Kaiser people and the Anthem people. And if that's the case, then I would say, you know, consider our proposal, but think about spending more money than, taking that same amount of, of three thousand to six thousand, and putting it then towards the Kaiser people, and let's go ahead and narrow that gap so that we can all start from the same, from a level field, and begin to address the escalating costs for everyone in the spring. So I hope that made sense, I guess you'll talk about it more later.
I also have a card from Alicia Golombiewski. This is G, there we go. You mean, you don't make your grade school children say that every time?
No, my kindergartners can say Golombiewski, it's their parents who can. I'm one of those people who have Anthem Blue Cross, I've had my doctor for twenty-seven years. I've been married to my husband for twenty-seven years, so there's two of the longest relationships I had. She's been through everything with me, and there's a lot that you, as a board, have no control over. You know, you have no control over the rents that are crazy, our mortgage interest rates, our car payments. But here's something that you can do for, for us here, the teachers that are in this district. So actually, please consider what Melinda has said, it's, you know, it's just, it's really not much money considering what the parents just did for us at Measure T and our Prop fifty-five. So, raise the cap, especially now when things aren't tight, and things are gonna look a lot better, except for the national election.
Thank you. Okay, and it heard from... Mary Hagan.
I'm Mary Hagan, I teach at Thomas Edison, and I'm one of the thirty-two people, and I just wanted to put a face and a name to one of those thirty-two, and we're, and I just was leafleting with Clayton, I enjoyed getting to know him on Monday morning. But we all, each of us have a story, and my story is that I was diagnosed with breast cancer this year. And actually, I got the phone call the first day of school, and I had been through surgery, and now I'm going through radiation. And it, I have a whole team of people helping me right now. I have a medical oncologist, a radiation oncologist, my surgeon, my OB-GYN, and my doctor, it takes a team to help me fight this fight. And so when you go forward making decisions, remember that we're not just a number, thirty-two people, where each of us have a story. And right now, I have a team helping me, and I, I want to stick with that team, thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for, for sharing those stories. Before we break and then go to closed session, we have some people we'd like to take a moment of silence in memory of. So we have Marcel Samonte Dioghi, father of Jack Dioghi, teacher at Fernando Rivera Intermediate School. Edward Ormansky, father of Ed Ormansky, teacher also at Fernando Rivera. And Virginia Duggan, former board member of Jefferson Elementary, and mother of Colleen Duggan, teacher at Garden Village Elementary. So if we could have a moment of silence in memory of these three members of our community. And we now will recess for five minutes, and then reconvene to closed session as soon as we've gotten things cleared up. Thank you for coming.
Did you have a chance to talk to the daughter? Oh my God, she was very close to me when we were on the board together. Yeah, well, she also had a place.